Well, the hour being three o'clock this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty, I will call this regular meeting of council to order. Okay, first thing, we have an agenda before us. Is there any additions or deletions? No? And would someone like to move? We adopt.
I will, your worship.
Counselor Bates, all in favor? Kerry, thank you. First item on the agenda is the regular minutes of council from November twenty third for consideration. Would someone like to move? We adopt those minutes.
I so move, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. Any errors or omissions to be noted? No? And all in favor of the motion? Kerry, thank you. Next are the minutes of the agenda and priorities meeting of December seventh for consideration. Would someone like to move? We adopt.
I so move, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Hale. Any errors or omissions to be noted? No? All in favor of the motion? Kerry, thank you. Okay, I want to proceed on to the next item of the public hearing, and I would hereby declare that the public hearing relating to bylaw fourteen seventy dash A seventy to open and just for clarification for the anyone that's in attendance, that there will be an introduction of the bylaw by administration. And then we will call for anyone in support of the bylaw. And then we will call for, hear from anyone that's opposed to the bylaw. And of course, after that, we will summarize the the bylaw and open it up for counsel questioning and proceed from there. So I would invite Director, there she is.
All right, so I'll just provide a brief introduction prior to the public hearings. So bylaw fourteen seventy A seventy is an application to amend the land use bylaw to amount, allow for the inclusion of secondary suites as a discretionary use within the R one N narrow residential, single-family narrow lot district. And to allow secondary suites within the, within accessory structures as a discretionary use within the R one C residential, single-family district. A secondary suite is defined as a dwelling unit located within the principal dwelling on a second story integral to a garage or as an accessory building where the principal use on a site is a detached dwelling. So currently, within the R one N district, secondary suites are not a listed use at all. And within the R one C, secondary suites are only provided for as a discretionary use if they're located within the principal buildings. So as a basement suite. So again, just this bylaw is to add secondary suites as a discretionary use in R one N and secondary suites within accessory structures, both in the R one C district.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this amendment? Now, I think I was mentioned that there may be someone out there in the
Yeah, I believe we have someone on Zoom.
Yeah, can you see us or hear us? All right, hi, my name is Terrence Singh. I'm on behalf of Creation Communities. We applied for this bylaw change because of the other areas we have operated in, including Crossfield and the Duke, where we have found success in secondary suites, whether they be on the principal property, the principal dwelling, or the property as a whole, whether that's garden suites or what we like to call Fonzie Suites, which is above the garage. And then also our salespeople themselves have run into many people so far where they have requested this type of product.
Consideration for you. Okay. All right, any anyone else that's would like to speak in favor of it? Okay. And then I guess if there's no one else, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this amendment consideration? I'll give it a second from the from the internet as well. Okay, well, it appears there's no one else speaking in opposition to it. Did you want to wrap up, Megan, and then we'll ask you some questions?
I guess, do you want to go into the full report right now or wait till?
Well, we can go till, go later if you like.
Whatever you prefer.
Let's leave it in the order of the agenda then for now. I just, I'm just thinking of the public hearing itself, but if anyone has any questions of Megan, other than we're still in the public hearing, so you do have the opportunity to ask any questions at this point in time until we close it. Council? No, no questions? All right, then I guess we'll move on to, I guess what I need to do is I need to have someone move that we close this public hearing.
I so move, your worship, that we close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harrison. All in favor? Kerry. Okay, there will be Taran, I think it was your name, sir, further discussion in the agenda. So I hope you can stay and listen to those discussions. All right, next, moving on to an RFD from the CAO is report.
Thank you, your worship. Just a few items to highlight for you. I maintained my seat on the on the AUMAC and Healthy Communities Committee, which they had their first meeting of this, this route, this go with this committee. The priorities over the given year include policing and justice, mental health and addictions, affordable housing, preventative social services, really mainly on, on the advocacy piece with provincial governments. Committee is made up of, really largely of elected officials throughout Alberta with a few administrators, just to help in that discussion. Just to indicate, council had their budget deliberations on November twenty fourth to twenty second. During those discussions, administration tagged several action items which are attached to this report, excuse me. I'm just looking for council to make a motion to ratify those action items. Not all inclusive, but they're often, can be forgotten. Just want to get a motion that'll put us back to administration to make sure they're tagged with our, with our tactical plans. Due to Boxing Day being on a Saturday this year, which is a stat holiday for, for the town. Typically, that, that stat would then move to the Monday, which is then, of course, a council meeting day, which would be moved to the Tuesday. Administration's asking council to consider counseling that meeting of the December twenty ninth, and if you feel that's appropriate, then a motion is required, plus then on to public notification. Just a few administrative focus areas for myself over the last couple of weeks, including aquatic center, project enforcement services review, neck dev plan engagements, code of conduct investigation, rig org plan, of course, the budgets and COVID nineteen. So if there's any questions to this report, council, or anything else from an operations or administration, please fire away. With that being said, please consider the recommendations of moving, approving additional action items associated with the twenty twenty one budget deliberations, as well as approving the cancellation of the December twenty ninth regular council meeting, and then, of course, approving the CAO report dated as of today, December fourteenth.
The, I questioned when we talked earlier CEO Becker about the fourth, is it, on Monday, the fourth? Do we, do we think we need that?
Your worship, I know, taking our conversation in review of the agenda, my thoughts are that maintain that meeting until it's closer to that date and potentially either go ahead with action items that require that attention or, or recommend to cancel at the given time. We can still do that without a council resolution. We need your approval. We can do that according to the MGA. Regardless, and then public notification, but I'd say maintain that meeting until further notice.
The timing, okay. All right, would someone like to move that we adopt or accept this report for information and which includes the cancellation of the December twenty ninth regular council meeting?
I'll make that motion, worship.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Kerry. All in favor of the motion? Kerry? All right. I'm sorry.
There's another.
We've done two already, so.
Oh, is there a second motion? You want a second? Okay.
I'll make a motion that council approves the addition action items associated with the twenty twenty one budget deliberations.
All right, yes. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Kerry, thank you. But we covered the two there, I think, with the first motion. Okay. CAO Becker on the CCC COVID nineteen.
Sure, man, council didn't plan on going through all the new restrictions. Certainly could pull that up if you wanted to see those firsthand. As counsel, that'd be easy to do. Just a few items to highlight with the ECC. All COVID public restriction complaints will go to public health, which then in turn will work with enforcement, the R C and P and the CPOs. The manager of Fire and Protective Services has been quite busy with the fire code occupancy load calculations for businesses back now the fifteen percent. Of course, we have increased cases in Innesville. I think fifty-one, Gary? Fifty-one as of today. We have been engaged with the food bank, making sure they're they're doing okay, which they're not asking any assistance at this given time, as well as winter kits are continuing to be distributed throughout the community through our interagency. We have implemented some internal procedures regarding safe cash handling, also other mechanisms, but also to to inform public to, if they can't pay by debit and some of those parameters and then rates, of course, we're not turning anybody away. Pool is closed as of Saturday evening. And CCC did go through the, if you remember, several months ago, the business continuity plan regarding pandemic. We went through that listing again, make sure that was up to date. And we did make some modifications based on what was going on back then to what is going on now. Certainly can share that information at a future council meeting. We are continuing to build out the outdoor rinks. I know they're being ready, they're being maintained now, or I'm not sure they're quite open yet, Steve, but I know the signage is going to be placed here shortly. The assessments have been complete and approved through ECC, and the guidelines by the province is limited to ten people or fewer. Recommendation of activity, kept to member of the same household or maintain that two-meter distancing if it's of different households. That's really some of the highlights. Um, that's really some of the highlights, uh, council. If there's any questions regarding COVID and what we're up to, um, besides that, I guess I can, um, state that, uh, to comply with the restrictions and recommendations, we do have some administrative folks working from home, um, and several folks are also, um, catching up on their vacation.
All right, any questions?
Your worship, through to maybe Chief Lees. Do you know that the COVID numbers are for Innesville and South Red Deer County? Do you know what area that encompasses? Is it like out to Spruce View and?
Gary, Gary, come to the front, please. Just with your mic.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's not defined on the geospatial section. It just, obviously, when you hover over certain areas on the map, it gives us, uh, Innesville and Red Deer County South, which is the fifty-one persons. I do know, as of today, there were five reported cases at our hospital.
Any other questions of the ECC committee report? If not, would someone like to move that we adopt that, uh, report?
I'll move that, your worship.
Thank you. Counsel Barkley? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Council action plan, any discussions there?
Just your worship, onto council, um, you'll notice that certain dates are struck out. I think it's council base brought up just some indication, uh, moving the date, so we thought, um, best reflects, uh, when those adjustments are being made, so we can answer to your questions. Ideally, we'd have a month, uh, so we'll comb through these, uh, tomorrow morning, and start to try to target dates of when we have these action items complete, that's the idea. Uh, but from now on in, you'll see a line through that date, um, that'll be removed for next meeting, with the new date, um, indicated in that, uh, in this action control. But if you have any questions, please, uh, again, fire away.
Counsel Reberger.
Through to the CAO Becker, um, we had some email correspondence, uh, about the Forty-Second Street, intersection, is that something we should formally put on this list or?
I'll let you measure that, uh, Counsel Reberger, uh, Steve, maybe to respond to, uh, just to explain not to how this came about. So especially on safety, council members, uh, responded to me this day. We have, um, some concern, we're picking it up in the community. So we did fire that over to, to Steve and to screw, uh, which led into unofficial action, but due to safety, we thought is pertinent that we, we jump on it. And Steve, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of counsel, can counsel update?
Sure, so, uh, along with, yeah, that information, and we did receive one, uh, resident, uh, email, just regarding a concern of that intersection. So, um, through with Gary's group, um, on the enforcement side, we did do, reach out to find out, what type of safety infractions have been at that intersection. So we did get a number, I think we have five events throughout this year. And then our, on the design side, we're going to look at, at evaluation of the safety and sightlines for that intersection. So, um, I think probably by end of January, we'll be able to, to report back to council in regards to our findings and any possible upgrades to improve the intersection if needed.
Thank you. Any other questions on that, uh, action control plan? Would someone like to move that for information?
I also move.
Thank you, Counsel Reberger. All in favor? Carrie? Next, we have a, uh, report from Chief Lees for consideration.
Your worship, council, uh, I'd just like to bring a proposal, uh, forward to provide, uh, a new communication system for fire and protective services for Innesville in twenty-twenty-one. Just give some background, uh, Alberta First Responder Radio Communication System, or AFRACS, is a two-way radio network for first responders in municipal, provincial, and first nations agencies. It became operational in twenty sixteen, sixteen, and was designed to allow agencies to share talk groups, allow an internet agency communication which previously was unheard of. In April twenty nineteen, Innesville RCMP moved on to AFRACS on encrypted channels. The peace officers previously shared their VHF system and their channels with both fire and the community peace officers. RCMP K division doesn't currently allow channel sharing with fire or community peace officers. Moving away from a VHF system would give enforcement, uh, a secure encryption of channels and provide integrated radio communications amongst first responders from different agencies. It will reduce the cost of radio system infrastructure, use robust, resilient, public, safety-grade radio technology in day-to-day operations, and fully coordinate responses for emergency scenes. The loss of direct communications with RCMP places the CPOs under increased risk, with the only radio communication being with, with each other, with our CMP assistance being via a nine-one-one call from their cellphone, or an alert through the Safety Link, which is a monitoring service through to the provincial, uh, radio communication center in Edmonton, via either an app on their phone or by a wristband which has an, uh, emergency or panic button, who would then, uh, contact RCMP. Regionally, community peace officers have a patchwork of communication systems. The combined approach will create a positive and safer working environment within the community for both peace officers and the community. The communication system aligns with the Peace Officer Collaboration Agreement with Red Deer County, which we signed in twenty eighteen, which references both mutual aid and communications. The twenty-twenty, uh, budget additions to protective services included ten thousand dollars, increase on operating budget for additional monitoring services through La Coen Police Dispatch, and fifteen thousand dollars from capital to purchase the AFRACS radios. Therefore, no budget increase will be required for twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one for this service. La Coen Police Service currently provides monitoring service for community peace officers in Red Deer County, La Coen City and La Coen County, with Blackfolds and Sylvan Lake and Penhold considering joining, uh, the monitoring service. The service provides twenty-four-hour direct communications with RCMP dispatch via a radio emergency button, uh, in case of officer distress, auto vehicle location systems, uh, officer tracking based on the radio handset as well, if they're away from their vehicle, and access to Canadian Police Information Center, or CPIC, and also registries, online, uh, access, uh, delivery system or roads. Uh, fire, so fire communications for Innesville and Red Deer County is currently on a VHF system, and so on a repeater station, which is not ideally positioned, which results in radio dead spots. There've been no upgrades to our repeater system since two thousand and eight, with upgrades not being made to the system due to potential move to AFRACS system, with no benefit of movement until our regional partners moved on to the system. Red Deer County proposed to move to AFRACS in twenty-twenty-one, with the city of Red Deer, Mountain View, Olds, Clearwater County, Blackfolds already being on AFRACS. Sylvan Lake Fire proposed to move to the system in twenty-twenty-two, with their CPOs already on the AFRACS network. Prior to moving to AFRACS, a fleet map of channels and challenge, channel sharing agreements with partner and partnering agencies needs to be completed. Red Deer County has completed the fleet map and has channel sharing agreements signed with neighboring and partnering agencies, and is able through agreement to share the fleet map with the town of Innesville for use with both enforcement, uh, CPOs and fire. Red Deer County have agreed to take on agency administrative costs in relation to the setup and maintenance of the system, and include Innesville in the group purchasing agreement, which would reduce the town of Innesville's cost for initial setup by twenty thousand dollars. In addition, they propose to include additional, uh, command radios at their cost for chiefs and deputies. Although the town is subject to the cost of most of the radio purchases, the town is not required, uh, to endure the expense of the fleet map development and administrative tasks of entering into agreements with the neighboring and partnering agencies. The AFRACS system will reduce significantly the number of radio black spots currently encountered on the VHF system, which will improve the safety of our fire department responders. The addition of monitoring system for the community peace officers will also provide reliable communications, increased access to operational intelligence through CPIC, and provide improved safety for the officers. If the RCMP as a future point allow access to their encrypted channels, the proposed build would accommodate this. Anticipated outcomes, agreement signed with partner and agencies, uh, purchase of required hardware, utilization of both systems in parallel to ensure business continuity for the initial transition. Service level impacts, it will provide a robust communication system compatible with partner agencies, mutually aid partners with the additional monitor of CPOs in the case of an emergency. Financial impacts, uh, capital expenditure from fire reserves of fifty-five thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-one. Operating budgets adjusted in twenty-twenty for CPOs by ten thousand dollars for monitoring service to continue. Strategic plan alignments, uh, building mutually beneficial partnerships with Red Deer County, and safer community for citizens, groups, and businesses. Public engagement, uh, information to council and communications and collaborations with regional partner agencies, information to council and agency stakeholders, RCMP, EMS, dispatch and services, et cetera. Recommended motions, first for council to enter into agreement with La Coen Police Services to provide the town of Innesville enforcement with operational communication services. For council to enter into agreement with Red Deer County to create a combined approach with the town of Innesville in respect to communications and information links. And for council to approve the capital request for fire department transition to Alberta First Responder Radio Communication Systems, AFRACS, in twenty-twenty-one for fire reserves of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, I had one question, uh, Gary. Our CPOs have no direct, uh, communication with the RCMP right now, other than cell, cellphone?
Other than cellphone, that's the only direct communication.
Yeah, okay. Well, they still actually, it looks like the proposal's not, uh, RCMP still won't allow direct communication with them under this proposal.
Your worship, the, the, they're currently running two trials within the province where RCMP are sharing, uh, radio communications with peace officers. The trials were originally designed to run for six months, they are still ongoing, nearly a year hence, and there's no outcome, uh, that's, or there's no news on how that trial has been perceived or where the trial is going. This new radio network system is compatible. If RCMP decide to share those channels, then we just need to reprogram our radios, and we will have that encryption on the radio for the peace officers.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion? Are we required, it looks like three motions?
I'll go with the first one now. Move that council enters into the agreement with La Coen Police Services to provide the town of Innesville enforcement with operational communication services.
Okay. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Next, we need a motion to go with an agreement with Red Deer County.
I'll move that, uh, council entered an agreement with Red Deer County to create a combined approach with the town of Innesville in respect of communications and information links.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Karen, any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Third motion required, uh, spend some money.
Yes, your worship, I would make the motion, the council, for council to approve the capital request for fire department transition to, um, Alberta First Responder Radio Communication, uh, AFRACS, yeah, for twenty-twenty-one from the fire reserve of fifty-five thousand.
Thank you, Counsel, I need a discussion.
Your worship, I just want to, uh, assure the manager of protective services that it's not that easy to spend the money, but you did such a complete job, that's why there's no questions.
Well, it looks like we've been, could someone overdue on our communications here, but, anyways, uh, any other discussion on that regard? All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Thank you, Chief Lees.
I think Carrie, Carrie's gonna deliver the budget report now.
All right, uh, the next item on the agenda. Director Wyman.
Apparently Gary set the bar high here for this one. Your worship, council, um, we're here again. I'm gonna start by the presentation, and then I'll go into the RFD. Maybe. Maybe.
I see.
Okay, twenty-twenty-one budget presentation, this is gonna look familiar, it's gonna have changes. So we'll get going. Oh, I gotta turn on, sorry. Okay, I'm gonna start with Todd.
Okay, sure. So, council, you've seen this a few times now, but just wanna, because we're doing this formally today, I'm asking you to consider, um, approving, uh, the twenty-twenty-one budget. I thought it was imperative just to go through these, uh, principles once again. So in advance of combining the twenty-one, uh, budget, council, uh, confirmed with administration the following guiding principles, that being communication with citizens is key, focus on efficiency, uh, revenue, consideration of marginal tax increase, protection of core services with the desire to achieve pre-COVID levels of service, maintain focus on community aesthetics and beautification, administration to demonstrate a budget rollback and to, and the, uh, potential impact to the levels of service. These principles were considered in the, in the development and the presentation of the twenty-twenty-one budget, which occurred November twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, supported by the ECC objectives, uh, being to maintain critical and high priority service levels to support employees and as well, um, public safety. So, not really following the script.
That's okay, no. Good enough, I'm catching up.
Uh, from my perspective as a CAO, administration, um, through the leadership of, of the core leadership team, but managers and staff, um, all staff representing through, that's from Heather and Erica, administration, administration has been diligent to achieve council's, uh, objectives, budget objectives, guiding principles, and to maintain an ambitious tactical and capital plan. And as you'll see through Heather's comments, um, the departments are demonstrating overall, uh, decrease of expenses by four percent. Uh, really, that's really it from my perspective, Heather is just, uh, uh, leading into council, just in making sure that administration did achieve those, those principles. Uh, from my perspective, the administration, the hard work, uh, of the staff have done a really good job to, to meet your initial, um, aspirations, and certainly looking forward to your dialogue, um, deliberation, and how you wish to proceed, uh, from this report moving forward.
Hey. So town overview, we have a population of seven thousand nine fifty-three. The town employs fifty-three full-time, twenty-six part-time casual, twenty-one firemen. We have nineteen fifty-three hectares of land, eighty-eight kilometers of open roads maintained, sixty-three kilometers of water mains, sixty-four kilometers of wastewater mains, and thirty-six kilometers of storm drainage mains. The twenty-twenty-one budget, through a collaborative effort by administration, the budget was produced that will help the municipality advance and provide expected level of service to our ratepayers, while still maintaining fiscally responsible and mindful that the province and the region are still in a positive, in a, in a position of recovery in today's climate. Property assessments continued to go on the decline. The town's overall assessment is lower, resulting in a loss of revenue, which has contributed to a challenge of the balancing of the process. Twenty-twenty-one budget. The twenty-twenty-one budget contains no tax increase, and the mill rate will be determined in March of twenty-twenty-one after assessments are received. The budget is being represented with a two percent decrease in revenue and approximately four percent decrease of expenses within the departments. The budget does not include COLA or merit for staffing. The budget includes a utility user increase of approximately eight dollars and fifty cents per monthly billing based on ten cubic meters. Operating MSI grant will be allocated to the Legion Handyman and Historical Society, and carbon income, carbon taxes included in this. And carbon income, carbon taxes included in this of $60,000. The 2021 budget contingency. It's sitting at 61,730 compared to last year's of 98,240. Tax summary, the tax assessment is expected to have a 3.29 residential loss and a 2.886 non-residential increase, which is resulting in overall net loss of 1.68%. The total tax loss is estimated to be approximately 125,000. An average residential tax bill will see a decrease due to lower assessment values. For every 1% tax increase would generate approximately $76,032. Franchise fees, what was new for the 2021 budgeting process for this allowed the change of timelines in order to decide what rates would be by early November to now going into January and February. The 2020 plan for was a 1% tax increase, which was allocated to the Safe Community Reserve and was earmarked for the CP pedestrian crossing. This was not included in the 2021 budget. The Fortis franchise fee current rate is 13%. Fortis is forecasting an increase in revenue, which result in an annual increase of 31,850 for a total of 1,148,91. A 2% Fortis increase will increase 208,479 at a cost of $1.94 per monthly user. Atco franchise fee rate will remain at 27%. Atco is forecasting an increase in revenue, which will result in an annual increase of 58,000 for a total of 627,593. Police services, the RCMP contract will increase slightly of 56,860 to with their cost projections that they submit each year for a three year project. Was hoping for a full year criminal record checks. Of course, COVID makes a huge impact on that that component. Protective services, overall expenses were decreased and increased in Red Deer contribution. The 2021 budget includes a $75,000 transfer to reserve. The bylaw, they will be reviewing bylaws, community standards, animal control nuisance and traffic bylaw. The CP rail enforcement and education, joint community safety events, i.e. the skate park. Transfer also to reserve of 15,000 and emergency management will do the reception center staffing and training. Roads for 2021 will show an operating projects of 35,000 for the paint intersection markings along 50th Street, 52nd Avenue, 51st Avenue and 50th Ave. Also includes a $25,000 cost for a sandy dump repair and 15,000 to capital upgrade. Update, sorry. The maintain overall services budget was reduced by 7% in this department. Snow clearing and removal services will follow the new 2020 policy. Replacement of utility tractor use for mowing and so and snow removal. They will continue to focus on sidewalks and trails that are safe and in good repair for 2021. They will catch up on center lines and crosswalk painting and develop a 10 year operating budget plan. Water rates, Mountain View Regional Water Commission expected an increase of five cents per cube. Increasing to $1.75 from $1.70. Based on commission, an increase of five cents and as well as another five cents to build the water reserve for future infrastructure for a total of a 10 cent change of the rates from 260 from 250 per cube. The base rate for each metered site will remain the same. This will put approximately 89,000 into the water reserve. Water services for 2021 will maintain service levels by reducing their budget by 2%. They will work on inoperal CCCs, work on the rotationing pump maintenance program. They're looking at installing a new diesel generator to reservoir two to replace the 1972 aged generator. We are working on implementation of the lead mitigation program and also working on developing another 10 year operating plan. Wastewater rates, South Regional Commission expects also to increase by five cents, so their rates will go to 240 from 235. The town is looking at that increase to match as well as another 25 cent increase to work towards to continue to balance the wastewater budget. The 2021 budget will increase is still having to pull from the stabilized race and reserve of 191,497. The rates will increase to $3.45 from $3.20. The rate would have to reach $3.65 per cubic meter to balance the budget to zero. That would not have any funds being put into reserves for future infrastructure. The base rate of $10 per meter site will remain the same. Wastewater services, they are maintaining service levels while reducing their operating budget by 4%. Continue to do serre lining and manhole replacements. Man replace manholes along 50th Street. Continue to invest reducing of the INI and develop a 10 year operating plan. Storm sewer, this will be the first year of implementation of a new flat charge of $3 for residential and $6 for non-residential. This will be transferred into reserve for 131,868 approximately. This will help the reserve to utilize towards future storm infrastructure. Solid waste, the rates for garbage yard waste recycling increase from to $25 from $23 per month per site. Transfer solid race reserve is estimated for approximately 53,000 with 34,000 to general cap reserve to continue to recoup for bins previously purchased and to work towards funding to purchase recycled bins. The automation is in full swings and definitely appears to have public support. So when the rates are all said and done and all the changes have been made, we sit at a $108 bill based on 10 cubic meters per month. We are still low in the grouping that we work with within our percentile. Third from the bottom, so this still puts us in in good standing for rate charges. Whoops, got a little happy there. Social planning, FCSS grant funding allocation of 207,000 still remains. Town's meeting that grant requirement internal programs approximately 22,600. Grants to community organizations will stay at 134,000. Things are working on is community development, community conversations, addressing challenges around domestic violence, mental health, substance use, suicide, suicide ideation, children, youth programming, housing and homelessness. Partnership with primary care network continues as well. Cemetery. Currently, we have available is 43 cremation plots, 20 veteran cremation plots, 19 full plots, 14 veteran full plots and five columbarium. Transfer to the reserve to perpetual care each year is 7,500. The assessment for the cemetery was completed in 2020, which provided a longer lifespan of the current cemetery with some modifications. You'll see that one as we go forward in 2021. Planning and development facade program has a budget of 10,000. We're looking at an aerial photo of 15,000 to update our GIS. Planning services PCPS of 40,000. We're looking at an urban design plan of 50,000. We're estimating a sale lot of two lots. And our previous mortgage payment is now transferred to reserve for facilities, which I'll touch on a little later. Economic development is showing a retail gap analysis action plan, marketing support. Major town events, i.e. market on the main, local intel and online community profile. Of course, various digital advertising marketing plan. We also added funds for resources to help implement the economic development plan. Tourism, again, working on the marketing plan execution, working on a smartphone app, i.e. my Civic and looking at photography and videography. Community services and program, the revenue and program is lower than previous years, which of course is impacted by COVID. Programs are currently under review. COVID limits the parameters of our existing programs, but has opened the door to more imaginative and different programs to make available. Still are looking at grants to community organizations for 13,000. We do have Canada's Day celebrations still in there for 2021 and of course our contribution to the historical village of 27,000. The arena, there even the contribution for Red Deer County is 170,500. We did do a decrease of revenue rental. The overall expense is also lowered by approximately 7%. COVID has changed the way we operate in the arena. More measures in place to provide for the safety of the community and our employees. They are also doing a transfer to capital for 85,000. The aquatic center also receives a Red Deer County contribution of 170,500. Their operating projects, they're looking again at chlorine exhaust fan and different exhaust fan. The steam generator needs servicing, backflow preventers and repairs to the dolphin. Maintenance work on the pool, of course, is boiler repairs, chlorine booster pump, chlorine room, annual maintenance and a grill bar for the drainage. Parks is looking at the urban forest management this year, 52nd Avenue and Willow Ridge tree replacement and develop an overall tree management plan. We're looking at the gateway landscaping phase number two. Diamond number seven enhancement. This also provides us to put 50,000 to mobile reserve, 25,000 to the playground reserve and 15,000 to the trail reserve. Normally we allocate 260,000 to recreation reserve, but you're going to see that change here a little later. Cultural programs and facility maintenance. We got lower, the revenue is lower here due to COVID rentals are expected to continue to decrease. The current transfer is again 10,000. And the 2021 will see connectivity between public works and the arena to for administrative phone system. Parkland Regional Library, normal requisition for them is 65,000 and the Innisfield Library requisition is 148,500. Expenses by department. Wages by department. Capital. Current capital for 2021, CP rail pedestrian crossing 600,000 from rail reserve and general cap reserve. CP rail whistle sensation 75,000 from general cap reserve. Fire AFRAC 75,000, which already got approved. Static speed cameras times two, 14,000 from the bylaw reserve. 53rd Avenue infrastructure repairs 1.1 million from MSP and reserves. 46th Avenue infrastructure repairs 945,000 from MSI and reserves. 2021 surface improvements 615,000 from federal gas. 2021 mill and overlay 500,000 from MSI and federal gas. The water field station will be 30,000 from the water reserve that is at our sandy dump. Playground, the Max Park, a collaborative project of 50,000 for our portion from reserves. Gateway landscaping phase number two, 110,000 funded by reserves. And ball diamond number seven enhancement 250,000 funded from MSI to work in a collaboration. We still have some carryover projects from 2020 budget. The sewage lagoon reclamation will continue sewer and manhole relining, the arena roof. Library lighting upgrades, public works and park shop repairs. The cemetery columbarium, which has been previously approved, it's coming in into 2021. The ball diamond upgrades, wayfinding signage, the arena dehumidifier, the ice resurfacer, the tile pool basin. Repelace, the drainage channel and the sound wall replacement. Capital equipment, the utility tractor with attachments for 200,000 funded from the operating budget. The diesel generator for pump number three or rez number three, 200,000 funded by utility equipment reserve. So the total capital spending for 2021 is 4,726,000 compared to 4,504,000 for 2020. We did have a lengthy discussion when we did budget deliberations and this was what needs to happen now to build for future facilities. So what was discussed and and hopefully will be passed is funds needed to start a facility reserve. So the previous year's mortgage payment of 100,900. Funds that would normally allocate to the rec reserve was 150,000. And increasing the franchise for Fortis fees 2% to give another 108,479. Total funds to be allocated to this reserve is 459,279. It would be expected that if we were to build a multiplex, it would take at least three years till it would be shovel ready or any future replacement as far as that goes. So this funds need to start to be collected for any future facility replacement. Your reserves, a budget addition to reserves was a total of 1.3 million in 2021 compared to 1.3 million in 2020. Budgeted production on using reserve funds, we're looking at using at 1.7 million for reserve funds in 2021. And we only use 726,000 in 2020. Your total reserves for 2021 should be sitting at 13,644,307. So now I'll go back to my RFD. So council did held budget meetings on the 23rd, 24th and 25th. It was open to the public. They, we had a few people in, I believe, on live feed on that. The budget did focus on efficiency, loss of revenues and maintaining core service levels. Revenues were 2% lower than previously. The unpredictability of COVID and lower tax assessments were contributing factors to the loss of the revenue. Departments did what we asked of them. We were looking at 1% to start with. They came up in bundles. They were between four and 7% with each of their departments. They made it not having to go back to the drawing board and said, we need to lower more. They brought it in right off the bat. So they understood what we were trying to do. The biggest change in the in the budget, of course, is your user fees. That is that 10 cents per cubic meter. Your 25 cents for sewer, your garbage $2 flat charge and your storm $3. That is again, an increase of $8.50 per month per 10 cubic meters. The other thing that should we really pointed out is looking at that franchise fees increasing that 2% so that we can start that facilities reserve. The previously the town did not have reserve funds allocated for future facility replacement. I listed out the other reserves there, so the 2021 capital budget, I got that worded wrong, is 4,726,000. The 2021 operating budget is 21,692,621. The contingency is 61,730. Your reserve balance will be 13,644,307. So at this point, I am providing a recommended motion that council approves the 2021 operating budget and the 2021 capital budget as presented and the proposed budgets for 2022 and 2023.
Well, to begin discussions, I would accept a motion to this effect if someone's prepared to make that motion. Accept this budget.
I move that we approve the 2021 operating budget and the 2021 capital budget as presented and the proposed budgets for 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, Councilor Reberger. Questions?
Your worship through to Director Wymark. Doesn't necessarily impact the budget, I don't think, but I believe December is the end of the penalty free time for taxes. And would we be able to extend that program or even look at no penalties on utilities now that we're going into more restrictions and don't know how long those are going to last. I just think it's going to be a pretty difficult time for for some people in the community and some businesses in particular in the community.
So your worship through to Councilor Barclay, you are correct. Penalties run January 1st. I just want some caution added with that. I did run our tax rule trial balance. We're the lowest we've been in five years. We're sitting only at 400,000. We're usually sitting at eight. I can tell you, these are frequent flyers. They are the individuals that are always on this list. They always wait for their penalties and they pay. The people that this worked for, they paid their bills. So it is not my recommendation. I did use the penalty funding to balance the 2021 budget. Same with utilities. That's just my recommendation. This this group that we have on our tax rule system are are the ones that have always been on there. COVID made no difference to them. I do commend the people that did use their COVID money and did take the other 400,000 off the table. And our our public did really well with that. But to to give these guys the free breaks when the others paid when they could. I'm not sure that's the best way to deal with that.
Okay, well, thank you for that information. That's interesting and I don't mean this is a discussion for another day, but I don't know if there's something we can look at doing or we need to look at doing as a municipality. I know Pinoka, for example, has put in place like a hardship grant or something. I'm not exactly sure what they call it, but if that is something we could maybe look at, you know, there's some people, there's some businesses that are falling through the cracks. if that is something we could maybe look at, you know, there, there's some people, there's some businesses that are falling through the cracks, especially businesses that have started within the last year because they don't have previous year's financial statements to compare anything to. So when you have to show you have a decrease in income, they, they can't do that. And
Your worship through to Councilor Barclay, I think you're going to see that when I bring back the most discussion. I believe there will be funds there that, that you certainly can put back out into the public and, and see where we can help in those, those avenues. That's where I would look at that more.
Well, perfect. Thank you. And as usual, you're a hundred steps ahead of the rest of us. Thank you.
The, I have one question, Director Wyemark, to the, the revenues generated by the new lease or I guess assessment on the solar farm. Where are they reflected in the budget mainly?
They're included in the bottom line. They were added in the full tax.
So they're, they're just, they're just part of the, what, what, and how much was that?
They average out. They bring in about a hundred and twenty two thousand this year.
See, what, what concerns me a little bit is, is what we've done is basically that we've, we've got a newfound source of funding to dump it into the general account in, in the efforts to show zero tax increases would be approximately two percent if we didn't put that into the operating. And, and, and you would think that it, it should be okay in the future to continue on, but it's newfound money this year, but next year, there won't be any newfound money. And, and all of a sudden, we're two, four percent short. So, you know, we're, we're having to use it this year to, to show zero increase. And it, and it concerns me to some degree, you know, if, if we're wise in our I guess, I guess my, my feelings was more that it, it could possibly be placed into a reserve account too for future consideration, but what we've done with it, we've thrown it into the operating and balanced the books. And is that a wise decision for us at this point in time?
So your worship, just a response to that. When, when we do expand land out and we do growth like that, is never the understanding that it's a safe pot and it'll be put away and used towards something else. It's the growth of our community that we're using, and we make those decisions to use those revenues to help us balance our budget and going forward. So if council is looking at that type of, of entity, then by all means, you go back to this budget and you take a certain amount out and you allocate it to something in particular, sort of like we did with the facility reserve. But then I'm looking for more money.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine, your worship. I, I hear your concept, and I guess something that kind of crosses my mind is that obviously the taxpayers' dollars were the dollars that went towards purchasing that land for future development. And if the town was able to, to solidify a deal with, to, you know, bring in revenue, I do understand what you're saying to, to understand, like, if we didn't have that, then, you know, there would have been a two percent percent potential deficiency, but I think it, for our community, our communities, you benefit by not having a two percent tax increase because of the future or from the past investment for that property. I, I like to see that as a kind of a break for our community. So that's how I look at it. And, but it is good to have that concept of, of if we didn't have that, where would we be?
Okay, fair point. Just that it's next year, you, you won't have that little surplus to, to balance. So it's going to hit you harder next year.
So your worship, you'll have that plus more. This was a partial year assessment. So you'll have full assessment if that clears that up a little bit.
So next year, we're going to be zero too.
What is the full year amount too? Sorry. I know you've told us, but.
Approximately two hundred and three thousand.
Two oh three?
Any other discussion?
Great job, Heather.
I have a question of curiosity. No, it's not going to hurt.
Now, you were really nice to Gary. Let me remind.
I thought early in your presentation, I saw the, the generator for the fireworks war was number two, and then I thought I saw it later as number three.
That's my.
Could somebody just say if it's the one by?
Number two. Yeah.
Is it the one by the golf course or the one by John Smabble?
There, it's Manville.
Thank you.
That's probably a diesel pump, not a generator too, isn't it? It is a generator. Okay.
Just, just a question, your worship. What, what happens? Like, obviously, it's a mid seventies. Is it just decommissioned and but is it a backup potentially?
So the existing emergency is a, is a diesel pump. What this will be used for is a diesel generator to actually work the pumps plus the facility itself. So. So it's just taken away some of the old infrastructure with some new technology and, and better management of the reservoir.
Thank you.
No other discussion? Gee, we've hardly talked about it. I'll ask the question and all in favor of the motion. Carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Wyemark.
I'm just going to hang around because I've got a couple more.
Okay, next we have an RFT regarding mask use policy.
Right, so council on November twenty third passed a resolution mandatory wearing the masks in town hall, and a policy was requested to provide guidelines. We know at the moment this is mute because we have different red, red, red restrictions in place. However, we hope these restrictions are not going to stay forever, and we want, as we come back out of those restrictions, we still want this mask policy in place as it rolls back out. So the policy encompass all town-owned facilities. If social distancing cannot be done safely for employees only, the policy does not pertain to the public. Administration town employees are doing their parts to ensure they are maintaining the established guidelines and working at providing a safe and healthy work environment. The policy also has a quick reference guide attached to show you what masks are best to be worn. So I am looking for a recommendation that council approved the mask use policy as presented.
Someone prepared to make that motion.
Your worship, I would make the recommended motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Hill. Discussion.
Your worship through there. Director Wyemark, so just to clarify, you're looking for a, a motion for masks to be worn in all public facilities? And by staff or by all public to enter any facility?
Just by staff. This policy only covers staff and council. So if the restrictions come off from the province that they don't, public does not have to wear a mask, we're not requesting them to wear masks in the facilities. Just our employees.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, Councilor Bates?
Your worship, so just one further clarification. So in a facility such as the library, where that's not our staff, but then our staff would come and go maybe to do janitorial or that sort of thing.
Correct. They would wear the mask.
But just our staff.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you. All right, Director Wyemark, you have a proposal for the bylaw sixteen fifty.
Thank you, your worship. This is a new for us. The guidelines of running for election have changed. Effective of January first of twenty twenty one, you now can submit your candidacy to run for council. So this requires the municipal bylaw to, election bylaw to be in place prior to January first so that we can start taking, so that you can allocate a returning officer or they have nobody to submit their, their forms to. So different way of doing it. So this bylaw is pretty, it's almost the same as what it was, other than it does do the outlines of returning officer of January first, a substitute returning officer, which is the finance manager's position. It also does lay out some timelines. So the guidelines for nominations, they're eligible from Monday to Friday from January first of twenty twenty to September seventeenth of twenty twenty one. And on September twentieth of twenty one from eight thirty till noon. This will be known as nomination day. It all happens here, and I'll be bringing you back information. So what this did was really shorten the timeline out from nomination day to actual election day. So you used to give us six weeks before, now they've given us four weeks. So it, it is a very tight timeline for, which is why they've allowed you now nine months to do the rest of it. So basically, all this bylaw is doing is allowing, following the regulations. The other thing is that the bylaw does pertain to nomi- not donations. That changed this year as well. So anybody running, there is quite an extensive package that goes with the candidacy packages this year because they really need to conform by those, those nominee or donation, nomination. So I am asking that council gives me first, second, and third reading on the bylaw sixteen fifty twenty twenty for the bylaw of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one municipal election of the town of Innisfail. And this again is putting me as returning officer and my office manager as a substitute returning officer. Because we must have someone in the building at all times if someone brings their forms in. CAO is always backup, by the way. He's, he's never off the hook, so.
Okay, is someone prepared to make a motion? And we give this first reading?
I'll make a motion that council gives first reading of bylaw number sixteen fifty twenty twenty. The town of Innisfail and the province of Alberta being a bylaw to provide for the twenty twenty one municipal election in the town of Innisfail.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Garrett. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Someone prepared to make a motion and go second, second reading?
Your worship, I'll make, give second reading to bylaw sixteen fifty dash twenty twenty.
Okay, Councilor Hill. All in favor of the motion? Carried. Someone may, prepare to make a third, a motion to.
Your worship. I will move that we move to third reading of bylaw sixteen fifty twenty twenty.
Yeah, just a clarification through to Director Wyemark. Nominations, I understand that. What about actual campaigning, signs, advertisements, pamphlets, all of that?
Starts January first.
Starts January the first.
They have to comply by the pol, the election policy signage, but they can start door knocking. They can. They can do it all.
It's a question, sorry to interject, to Heather. Does the town produce those brochures or information for potential candidates?
Yes. So there's a candidate package coming out. They're hoping to have it up to date by January first, which is the AUMA and, and elections by law that do it. So I hope they have it up. So yeah, there's a big thick package that goes out to all candidates as well, which will tell them where they can put it, their total guidelines of what they can do and can't do.
Okay, thank you.
I would suspect you would be required to file your intent to run before you could put signs up, right?
Absolutely. You cannot be out there doing anything unless you've submitted your candidate forms.
Okay, we have a motion to proceed to third. All in favor of the motion? Carried. Someone prepared to make that third?
I'll move that we give this bylaw sixteen fifty third reading.
All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thanks, Heather. Okay. Karen. Welcome. Floor's yours.
Thank you. So I'm here today to request a decision regarding the FCSS twenty twenty one funding based on the recommendations of the advisory board. So the advisory board met on November twenty fifth to discuss recommendations for the distribution of grant funding for twenty twenty one in the amount of a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. The town will receive approximately two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and ninety two dollars from the province of Alberta in twenty twenty one. I have the chart outlining the recommendations as well. The anticipated outcomes is that programs and services will continue to be provided, which supports the well-being of children, families, caregivers, older adults, and seniors in Innisfail. Minimal impacts to FCSS staffing. Funding agreements will be created. I will liaise with funded agencies and monitor reporting requirements as per day-to-day administration of FCSS funding program. So the recommendations are as follows according to the chart that's in the document. Chinook's Edge, the recommendation is sixty thousand. Innisfail Seniors Drop-In Society, the recommendation is twenty two thousand five hundred. The Innisfail Public Library, six thousand five hundred. Red Deer Catholic School Board, fifteen thousand. And Innisfail and District Victim Services in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And an FCSS reserve in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for a total of a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. The applicants will be contacted directly via a letter or email to inform them of a decision regarding their application. And the public will be informed via press release distributed to the media and posted to social media and the town of Innisfail website. So the recommended motion is that council approve FCSS twenty twenty one funding recommendations as follows. Chinook's Edge School Division, the Innisfail Seniors Drop-In Center, Red Deer Catholic Regional School Division, the Innisfail Public Library, and the Innisfail Victim Services Volunteer Victim Advocates Training Program, with the remaining recommended funds withheld for FCSS contingency purposes for a total disbursement of a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars as per the recommendations of the FCSS Advisory Board.
Okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I will, your worship. I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Okay, no discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to follow-up of our public hearing here in regards to bylaw fourteen seventy, land use bylaws, secondary suites.
Okay, so as previously mentioned, bylaw fourteen seventy A seventy is an amendment to the land use bylaw to allow for the inclusion of secondary suites as a discretionary use in the R one N district and secondary suites within accessory structures as a discretionary use within the R one C. So secondary suites are currently provided for within our, I'll just go through that list. So they are not provided for within our R one A district. A discretionary use within the R one B. They are discretionary only within the principal dwelling in the R one C. So that is one of the changes of this bylaw. And in the R one N district, they are currently not a listed use as well. Within the R two district, a discretionary use, and within the RT district, a permitted use. So further in the land use bylaw, secondary suites are limited to six, eight hundred and sixty square feet or forty percent of the total building area. One parking stall must be provided in addition to the two required for a detached dwelling. So any site with a secondary suite would require three parking stalls on site. And suites located within, within an accessory building must provide additional setbacks and may not exceed twenty five feet in height. So based on the town's current additional requirements for secondary suites, it is the opinion of staff that secondary suites could provide second, sufficient parking on site on both an R one N or on an R one C parcel. This is based on the LUB requirement of a minimum of two point seven five. This is based on the L U B requirement of a minimum of two point seven five meter wide parking stalls. So the report also provided a comparison of area municipalities. Lots as narrow as Innesville's R one N district allow for secondary suites. Some of the districts do require that they're only within the home as opposed to within a, an accessory building such as a garage. So. Within Red Deer County, the city of Red Deer, Penhold, Sylvan Lake, Olds, Erdry, Laduke, and Calgary. Lots similarly sized to our R one C lots provide for garage suites in Black Falls, Penhold, Sylvan Lake, Olds, Erdry, Crossfield, and Calgary. So certainly, this was territory that has been covered in some of our comparable and neighboring municipalities. So in general, secondary suites are considered an effective mechanism to provide for increased residential density without significantly impacting neighborhood character or services. They're also indicated as a means of wealth creation as mortgage helpers, allowing households to move from rental to homeownership. As well as an option for housing elderly family members, students, or workforce housing. Trends in housing size, housing type, and the proportion of the population choosing to live alone or without children supports secondary suite development in a number of ways. Since the nineteen forties, the size of a typical single-family house has increased from approximately fourteen hundred square feet to over two thousand. Resulting in homes that are often far oversized for occupants. This has resulted in a trend to create secondary suites. Suites support the income of the primary occupants. And can allow for older fixed income residents to remain in their homes. Household size, so an increasing number of people are choosing to live alone or in smaller households. Individuals are living longer and wanting to stay in a house type they are familiar with. In the US, US, the number of single-person households has steadily increased since the nineteen sixties with upwards of twenty-eight percent of Americans living alone. In two thousand and sixteen, Innesville identified over twenty-seven percent of households were one-person households. So people are living in larger homes with less occupants for longer. This highlights a huge opportunity for homeowners to make better use of their space without significant impact on the character or number of individuals living in a neighborhood. So housing type, it's a number, another factor, the number of multifamily buildings being developed has continually decreased since the nineteen eighties. Resulting in reduced options in this category and a large number of multifamily buildings being in a poor state of repair. Innesville has experienced this with large apartment buildings and fourplex units sitting vacant. Secondary suites are often highlighted as a means of promoting affordable housing in our community. Finally, regulations that support the creation of secondary suites will result in a greater number of suites that are inspected, monitored, and meet Alberta Building Code. Where bylaws do not support suites, they are often created illegally, resulting in no inspections or records to support the safety and emergency services. So. One of the factors when we're looking at enforcing secondary suites is that at least if there's an avenue to legalize them, there's a greater chance that. We're going to get them improved and safe as opposed to them just kind of hiding from us. So. So again, strategic plan alignment, diversity, diversify housing options. So to ensure an inventory of options available to attract and retain residents across a variety of demographics. So the public hearing for this bylaw was advertised in the Town Voice as per the town of Innesville's advertising bylaw. At this time, administration is recommending that council approve second and third reading of bylaw fourteen seventy A seventy as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Someone prepared to make a motion at this point?
I will move that we approve second reading of bylaw fourteen seventy A seventy as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion? Council Bates?
Just have one question through to Megan. So you mentioned that one of the benefits, of course, is that people tend to try and do some of these anyway. Would this be a great time as we, if we, if we approve it to announce to people that it's a good time to legalize the suites they might have already?
I, I certainly agree, and we've flagged that to look at promoting education sort of through the first part of two thousand and twenty-one. And Tracy's actually even looking into some places that are offering a registered suite program so that occupants, when you're going and looking at renting somewhere, you can. Check a register or something so that you know whether or not the suite is legal or not. So you're not having trouble getting a post office box or trouble getting some of these issues that people, tenants end up running into once they've already rented a suite. So before I think we can pursue any sort of hard enforcement, we do need to give people a fair bit of lead time so that nobody can say they didn't know.
Council Reberger?
Through to Director Jenkins. So I'm just curious about the, in the accessory building. For instance, I have a shop in my backyard that when it was built, it had a, a limit of a fifteen-foot building height. But in here, it says you could have a twenty-five-foot height. So in my R two's district, could I take that roof off, put a suite up there and come in under that twenty-five feet and have a legal suite?
Yeah, as for the land use by law regulations, you could, yeah.
Because there are a lot of, people have a lot of detached graders like I do have. So I think it's going to be a popular question. So I'm just, just curious how that works. Thanks.
Your worship, through to Director Jenkins. Back to Councilor Bates's inquiry with existing suites. Would you foresee those being grandfathered as in, if there was a suite in a basement in a home that's older? You probably would find that basement windows may not be compliant to today's standards, et cetera. So how, how would that work?
So those would be building code requirements. So there are some exemptions that the, the building inspector can, can consider based on. How long the suite has been in place. But yeah, the building inspector would be going back in as part of those, those permits as well.
Well, it's good for emergency services to know who's living in these, you know. Secondary suites or if there is in fact a secondary suite involved. But anyways, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. Someone prepared to make a motion? We proceed.
I'll make a motion, worship, that we move to the third reading, reading of bylaw fourteen seventy dash A seventy.
You write the third reading?
We can just make it through.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you, Megan. And Megan, you have a proposal for a lot?
Yes, so looking for, to formalize council direction for the sale of fifty-four Napoleon Meadows Way. For ninety-six thousand dollars as per the offer to purchase submitted by Mason Martin Homes.
Okay, thank you. Someone prepared to make a motion to that effect?
I'd so move, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Harrison. Discussion. No discussion? Then all in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. And moving on to seven point four, community benefit and fee assistance policies.
Okay, so we're, administration is requesting council consideration of three motions related to the allocations of funds to be received. From the Innesville Solar Corporation as part of the agreement made for the solar farm. So the three motions will be looking for the approval of the two policies, the community benefit policy and the community fee assistance policy. As well as a motion to create the Innesville Solar Corp Community Benefit Reserve for the holding of those funds when they are received. So as part of the agreement between the town and Elemental Energy regarding the solar, Innesville Solar Generation Project. Memorandum of Understanding was struck between the parties that will have Elemental provide twenty thousand dollars a year of operation to the town to create a community benefit fund. So we will be receiving fifty percent of that for two thousand and twenty-one as the facility started operation in June. So the community benefit fund is intended to be accessible to community members or organizations for the purpose or activities that directly benefit the community. The MOU further states that the town and Elemental will work together to structure and define the management procedures for the process of how these funds have been awarded. So this community benefit policy has been referred back and forth with Elemental and, and they are in support of the policy as it stands. So. The community benefit policy establishes the criteria for allocating the funds received. As well as the creation of the community benefit reserve. The policy has been created to reflect the desires of Elemental Energy as well as identified community need. So the policy outlines the creation of a fixed and open allocation components for which the contribution will be split fifty-fifty. The fixed component will support an environmental education program in local schools. As well as a community fee assistance program for low-income individuals to access local recreation, arts, and cultural activities. And I'll talk a little bit more about the community fee assistance program in a minute. The open allocation will be available to community groups and is intended to support special events, initiatives, and projects. Examples include educational programs, capital projects, community events related to the funding categories. Or other initiatives. So the open allocation requires requests to be submitted by March first of each year. And will be allocated in April. The review of the applications will be completed by the Community Services Standing Committee. With recommendations from administration and Elemental Energy. The open allocation is intended to complement and limit the overlap with the existing community grant program. The new policy proposed or allows for capital expenditures to be included. For example, new equipment for schools, senior center, or the library, which are not possible under the existing grant program. The new policy also includes the elements of social welfare and education that are not explicitly captured under the existing community grant program. The new policy kind of goes away from the sporting events and tournaments, those types of things that you can apply through the community grant program. So we tried to eliminate or avoid as much overlap as we can between those two grant programs. So then on to the community fee assistance policy. So this is a policy. That administration had identified that a fee subsidy program is something that our community is lacking. Many of our neighboring communities. Red Deer, Penhold, Black Falls, La Combe, all offer similar programs, and the need is apparent in our community. So this program is meant to support low-income households and, and individuals of all ages access recreation, arts, culture, and transportation programs within the community. Funds will be paid directly to the service provider on behalf of an applicant to a maximum of two hundred dollars per individual per year. Low income for the purpose of this program includes those individuals or members of a household receiving age, unemployment, or falling below the low-income cutoffs. Reported by Statistics Canada. The income thresholds indicate a level below which a family will likely devote a larger share of its income on necessities of food, shelter, and clothing than the average family. So this is a program that individuals or families could access if they either want to access town programs. So if it's swimming lessons. Or various programs accessed by the town, or they could also look at, at private programs as well. So then up to two hundred dollars per individual per year. They would submit that application to the town and the funds would be paid directly to the service provider on behalf of that individual. So of the overall, we'll talk of twenty thousand dollars a year just because it's easier, even though we know this year it'll only be half. Ten thousand dollars will go to the fixed allocation, which is the education program in the schools and this community fee assistance program. And the other will be the open allocation that's open to community organizations to apply through that program. For various activities and projects that they would look to be completing.
Okay. All right, well, I would accept a motion to, first of all, approve of this benefit policy two thousand and twenty oh seven. Prepared to make that motion?
Your worship, I will make a motion that we approve the community benefit policy two thousand and twenty double oh seven as presented. Then I also have a question.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Markley, any further discussion?
I, I do have a question for Director Jenkins, not that this will surprise her, but so this fund, making the community benefit funded, is it going to be open to the public or is it just for Elemental?
So the policy is set up right now. It has two components and it reads that there's the, the elemental section, which we've sort of established. If another donor came forward in the future and wanted to set up something similar or wanted to contribute, it does allow for that. But the section that sort of lays out what will happen with Elementals money is, is specific to that for now. But it does have that ability that you could add if, if some other donor came forward and wanted to set up a similar program or wanted to contribute to the same. Pot of money, I guess.
So we'll, we will have an Innesville Community Benefit Fund that a hundred people could come and donate to it if they wanted. And then. How that money is used would be kind of described here, or would you have to set up another policy to determine how the community money is used?
We could set it up within this policy, but again, then that group could, could specify different principles or, or things where Elemental was quite specific about sort of the environmental. Component and some of those.
What, what if you had, I don't know, fifty individuals that came and wanted to, to contribute? I, I guess I, I see the generosity of this community right now. It's been absolutely incredible. And, but it's also kind of fractured in the sense that, you know, somebody's going to do something here and something here and something here as opposed to having the central. Place where someone could donate. And I'm assuming the town can issue charitable receipts. So that, that's a bit of an issue, right? With, with some places, I know the ski hill, for example, looking for, for donations. You know, you don't necessarily want an organization like that to have to go through everything to become a, have the charitable status. But if that money can go through the town to another organization, it just makes it so much simpler. And I, I, I could see this. Benefit fund, I guess, you know, growing and becoming quite, quite large. I had a couple email me last night. They've bought a, a food hamper, a hundred and seventy-five dollar food hamper. That they're looking to give to a needy family in this community. And, you know, cities are for somebody like that to, okay, I'm going to go donate to this community fund. And we know that. Karen is here and, and she knows who the families are. And, you know, so there's more coordination, I guess, is what I'm getting at around.
So we would have to update this policy to create that sort of open donation. Because Elemental's money sort of has to be allocated to that specific. We'd probably have to create another reserve account and then the criteria for that. If there was a, a group of people or, or how we would, you know, sit down to, to figure out some of those priorities.
Yeah, I guess it's the chicken or the egg, right? Like, do you need a group of people to come forward or does the town take the initiative and set it up? And then it's there for. You know, ten months down the road or, or whatever, but it's something that you, you guys can, can think about and decide. But I, I, I think it would be a, a pretty popular. Thing if it's possible.
Okay, any other discussion on that motion for the first on the benefit policy? All in favor of the motion? Karen, thank you. We are looking for a motion to create the community benefit reserve.
I so moved that council approved the creation of the Innesville Solar Corporation Community Benefit Reserve.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. No discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. And I guess we need a motion to approve the community fee assistance policy.
I'd so move, your worship, that council approve the community fee assistance policy two thousand and twenty dash zero zero eight as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Harrison. And just as clarification, Megan, the, this policy versus the benefit policy, really what's the significant difference?
So this is a, a program that, that individuals can come to access if they want to take part in a, in a specific program and they meet those low-income thresholds. So, yes.
Okay, just clarification. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. All right. I think we've covered everything. Move on to correspondence and information.
Your worship, I just have a couple of questions and in correspondence, I guess, for CEO Becker, number nine, the. Emergency medical services review, does that impact? The service here, taught with stars?
Your worship, Council Berkeley, I believe it's associated with the AHS managed facilities. Likely could be used to benchmark. Your discussion as per our current heliport.
Okay, and then my other question would be number six with the NSVail Ski Club. As the letter says, they they did not get their grant funding. And I I know they did a presentation to us prior and I'm wondering if. Maybe there's going to be further dialogue between the the town and and the ski club and. I I think the, I I did speak with Branta a week ago or a couple of weeks ago that. You know, that they they would love to see a gate if possible from blocking the parking lot off after hours and maybe that is something that. The town would be able to help with and so. Not sure where that's at with Stewart and.
Your worship, the Council Berkeley, there's indication of delegation in the near future from ski hill representatives, so we'll see how that materializes. But they have an interest to come before council.
So the CFAP said no. They haven't supported us on anything this year.
Your worship, on to council, number number three as well, there's a. A letter from Creation Communities asking council for consideration. First, advocacy work, I just wanted to highlight, make sure that that item was not forgotten. I don't want to interfere with where you're at with that. If no action is, it's basically accepted as information, but just pointing that out to you.
Your worship through to CEO Becker, with respect to to that letter. How do we initiate that discussion? Does that come from the town through to Alberta Transportation or?
Yeah, your worship, Council Berkeley, usually. And I'll get Steve with his experience, but typically you work with the developer. And then administration to administration, so there would have been conversation at some point between town administration with Alberta Transportation Central Office. And I don't want to go too far without, I know that there's some discussion there, but. So at some point then, if it's not, if there's no action from administrative perspective, we'd come to council and. And see if this is of interest, if you would like to support this request. From what I believe from talking to to staff is, we've had that conversation. We're not setting up Central Alberta, Central Alberta Transportation Office. And there's opportunity to advocate if you deem that appropriate.
So your worship through to CEO Becker, are you suggesting that we should be just, I mean, the the time it takes. You know, to get something done with Alberta Transportation and, I mean, we might be two years down the road, right? Where and that that is a pretty dangerous intersection with the the speed on Highway fifty four and.
Exactly, your worship, Council Berkeley, it's Creation Communities is stating basically that is. There's a speed issue and a crossing issue to access and to come out of their subdivision. And they're asking council to support that process through through a letter to to the government, probably to the Minister of Transportation. Including our MLA, just indicating that. What council's interests are. So if you think you wish to proceed and have a lower speed in that adjacency to the subdivision. And have a crosswalk, then it'd be appropriate for for council to undertake the advocacy work.
So what you would like, like to have a motion then to to have a letter sent?
If Council Berkeley, if I anticipating that there may be some interest, I came up a little bit of wording you may want to consider.
Oh, it's quick.
Again, only if council desires, but move for council to write a letter to the Minister of Transportation. Requesting the construction of a pedestrian crosswalk and speed reduction on Highway fifty four, which runs adjacent to the newly constructed Bella Vista subdivision.
Well, I I will make that motion without repeating it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just fully support that motion. You know, we we approve a subdivision on the other side of the highway and. How are we going to get across it? So I I fully support that that motion and. Yeah, I think it's some responsibility of the town to see what we can do to help out the developer.
Yeah, your worship through to, just to rest of council. I don't know if we maybe want to consider also adding something to do with how the lanes. And I don't know if anybody sees those lanes as a, the way it's set up as a problem, because. The way it was before, it seemed to be better when that right lane was. So if we can, and if. If everybody else sees that, then maybe we should add that to the discussion as well to revamp it, I guess.
Your worship through to council, CEO Becker, would we also? Maybe add, one time I heard something about a potential traffic circle. At that intersection, I don't know if that would work with the kind of equipment that's going around there, doesn't seem possible, but.
I think at time of. Consideration for the intersection upgrade, that's typical Alberta Transportation standard is is a traffic circle review gets done at that time, so.
Okay, any further discussion?
Sorry, so I guess I guess that's what we're more or less asking for in as a whole is a review. Right of the whole situation, lanes, pedestrian cars and. And speed reduction as a as a whole, right? Thank you.
So there's some motion on the floor? All in favor of the motion?
Sorry, apologize. Do we, do we want to revamp that then to a total review, just so that that's included or do we, are we satisfied with that?
I think it would.
Maybe just read it one more time if you don't mind.
So this one I had, Council Carrot. Moved by Council Berkeley to write a letter to the Minister of Transportation requesting the construction of a pedestrian. Crosswalk and speed reduction on Highway fifty four, which runs adjacent to the newly constructed Bella Vista subdivision. So again, the focus is construction of a pedestrian crosswalk and speed reduction. So I'm sure what the technical terms are, Steve, on all inclusive to turning lanes.
Yeah, it might be actually two different processes there. So one would be the the, as per the motion, and then maybe a second motion to just review the intersection.
Sure, I just don't want it to be forgotten that part of it, so sure, we can do that.
Okay, well, we've got an initial motion. I'll ask the question, all in favor? And you want to make a second motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we send a letter to Minister of Transportation for a view of. Of the whole. The lane change, whatever, a full. Safety of the intersection, sure, thank you, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Anything else from those correspondence? Well, if not, then would someone like to move we accept these correspondence for information?
I so move your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Hill. All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Open mic. Stephen, you haven't had to do anything tonight. Heather?
I do have a reminder of your time sheets in, basically as soon as you're done next Monday, I believe you have AMP. So right after that, if you could get it in so we can get payroll done before.
Just one thing, I believe council was offered the opportunity from Kane to record some Christmas greetings to. Post as part of a holiday hashtag, so if you're not able or comfortable posting them yourselves to your own accounts. You can send them to me or to Ken and we'll get those greetings posted to the to the town sites.
Your worship through to Director Jenkins, is Kane here because I I emailed mine to Kane?
Okay, I can follow up. Kane's actually on holidays this week, but he will be back next week, but.
Okay, well, I can email it to you then.
I know I got things backwards here, but anyway.
So I was just gonna ask Director Jenkins, so just a cell phone. Selfie, short video.
Yeah, it was just an opportunity to say happy holidays from Councilor Bates.
So we should send it.
You can send it to me. Yeah, we'll get it dealt with.
Kenny, you got anything back there? Okay, now we're gonna do the council report.
Councilor Hill. I actually worship, I don't have a whole lot to add tonight. I haven't been too terribly busy with any of my council duties.
So since the last AMP, really, the only thing. That I do was attend the public thirteen ways presentation, which I thought went over well. I did have one person follow up with me that that he was quite. Quite impressed. I kind of go to them into getting on there. I also had my second person tell me that they love the train whistle and. So the score is a lot to two. But he actually wanted, his name mentioned, it was Gunner Hanson, he phoned me. And and one other person actually mentioned to me they. They noticed, I think it's been up sometime, the sign on the highway on the two way as you head towards Penhole as you're leaving NSVail. And on the back of it, it says, which you're seeing on the way out. Thank you for visiting, but it doesn't say where you were, which it just seems like. If we have that opportunity to state our town name, we probably should in the future. I I'm pretty sure that sign is so permanent, you would not want to change it at this point, but just wanted to bring it up. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I went to listen to the public engagement of thirteen ways as well. And of course, the library is closed at this point and that's all I have.
Okay, thirteen ways presentation, I also listened to. AUMA was hosting Alberta Health Services last week with Dr. Burma Yu, the CEO of Alberta Health Services and some other people. They were talking about, you know, how. Health services needs to change in our community and age and place, so I put in the chat box a little brag up about NSVail and everything that's that's gone on with. Age friendly and dementia friendly, so somebody from HS will be reaching out this week to touch base on on that, so. I was also on the, and I can't remember the name of it, but the rural policing presentation that was last week. Jan Fox and Councilor Jean Boda was extremely interesting and and very well done with quite a. Vaster array of people on on that panels. And I just wanted to ask, I guess, CEO Becker, during our thirteen ways presentation, there was a. A message about. Sandwich board sign and wondering if you can kind of give us some history on that and is that resolved? And I mean, I certainly saw a sandwich board out on the boulevard in the summertime all the time and and stuff, so. Wondering where that is at? Do we need to change things? Do we need to? Do anything to to help with that situation?
Yeah, that was a good comment made by the by the business owner. We did have a quick conversation at our director's meeting this morning. Just have that chat, just make sure it was clear on what was occurring with mobile. Mobile vending as well as signage, so I think, Megan, if you and mine just kind of. Kind of outline where we where we're at and where we're going type of thing and what's what's missing.
Sure, so with respect to the the sandwich boards or the A boards. Technically, right now, they're they're not allowed under our policy. And as we've gone through this thirteen ways process, we've kind of just held off on. Digging in on that because some of their suggestions were that they were positive. So within the downtown, you are able to put a sandwich board sort of right directly in front of your bill building. But the ones that we see that are either, you know, at the corner for Coffee Cottage or even on the separated boulevard at Darkwoods. Technically aren't provided for under our policy. So we would need to either be changing the policy or, you know, making that determination that we're fine with the policy the way it is. And then proceeding to enforce consistently throughout the the community. So that may be something that that is revisited depending on on council's appetite. I believe one of the other comments out of that was with respect to the mobile vending. And I know we've discussed at MPC when the permits have come forward that our land use by law isn't set up ideally for those types of. Businesses and being able to respond quickly. It is earmarked for the next time we do a review of our land use by law to. Yeah, change those requirements so that it's not a an MPC and an appealable process to designate a spot for a for a mobile vendor.
Yeah, your worship through to Megan, and I I think I would like to get it on on an agenda maybe next for AMP to. Have the discussion as the the parameters of downtown, because it seems to be a very. Different meaning for everybody in town, especially for the ones that are on that end of town, so. And that, and then I think from there, once we decide what those parameters are, then we can have. The discussions of, you know, each each business having the same, the same laws or rules.
And I think that's a challenge as you get downward, it's a it's a separated boulevard. You know, as opposed to that adjacent sidewalk, so yeah, it's probably a good conversation to to have to make sure we're on the. The same page as to what the expectations are.
Clarity, Council Carrot, you're talking about signage boards.
I think we need, there's there's really been no definition of what is downtown and. Everybody assumes it's the little section from Banker's Corner West to Fast Gas and. Anybody that has a business up west of Banker's Corner would like that to be determined downtown as well and and would like that to be from. McDonald's or say the overpass to Fast Gas, so. I think it's a big discussion and and I think we need to 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 determine. What downtown actually means and that we have the same rules apply for all of those businesses.
Your worship, I I think as an extension to that. What I heard, I think, was the A board signage, probably like. Wherever downtown is, we currently allow in front of the store. But this was out on a boulevard, which is another issue and so. Yeah, it's kind of complex.
Yeah, when we were. Sitting on that sign committee, Gavin and I both sat on it. The thinking was that an A board sign made sense in front of your own business, but if you were gonna. Have a grand opening, that you should be getting the permit to have the sign on the boulevard for a month or whatever, or a week or whatever. And that was kind of our thought process at the time is that it didn't make sense to. Have those sign board, the A boards out. If it wasn't adjacent to your building, then it should be a different type of signage and that was just our thought process at the time and maybe that. Isn't the right thought process for now, but that's where, that's just the background on how we got to where we are. And I I don't, and I don't know that it specifically said downtown, it just said adjacent to the business. My recollection.
Yeah, when you have a sidewalk. When you have a sidewalk.
Yeah, you're right, Danny. I think I I thought it was from. Whatever that is, Co-op Corner, right to the tracks, it was sandwich boards allowed.
Which you can, you know, you can put them on your property or you can put them right up at the edge where you end up with that sort of service road. In front of, you know, Darkwoods or Home Hardware, it it's less clear. I guess for the the downtown definition. Downtown, under our downtown area redevelopment plan does run right from McDonald's all the way through. How we use that language, I guess, maybe is is another thing. The sort of two block section that is zoned central business district, like there's a few other. Differentiating factors, but certainly a good conversation.
It has to be on private property, you know.
In the where you're butted right up to a sidewalk, as long as you're not blocking the sidewalk, you can put one A board sign out in front of your business. So it's.
Yeah, your worship through to Director Jenkins, I I think too, there was a. A sign board on Fifty Street outside the Co-op almost every Sunday all summer, right? Sitting on the shoulder of the road and so, I mean, I would like to see us accommodate. Those kind of signs for business. And yet, how do we control it so that, you know, you get down to the Co-op and you don't have. Everybody down there putting sign boards out on the shoulder of the highway, the Fifty Street, but. I know, you know, at MPC, it was even brought up a little bit like with the the Darkwood sign on the boulevard and and. You know, the grass cutting that takes place and and that kind of thing, but. I don't know, I would just like to see a way for us to somehow try to accommodate that type of business. You know, whether it's Coffee Cottage on the corner, whether their sign board at the Legion and stuff, right? But what can we do just to support these? These places of of business and. And make make the, as you said, the the application like for the food trucks and stuff easier, right? I know we had. Two or three of those come to MPC as well and. And kind of reduce the the time and the red tape that takes to to do that kind of thing. They could just come into the town and get a permit for. Whomever to come onto their property for the weekend and and do their food truck thing. I think that would be enhancement.
This be a good project for your new.
I just. Just looking for some clarification. So I think initially. When there was increasing billboards and signage, there was some interaction that created confusion for businesses and. And enforcement confusion. So we made some adjustment based on the policy. And I'm not hearing a lot of concern right now. And you guys can tell me differently, if you have eyes and ears. We also have a tag to adjust the, well, not adjust, ask you to consider adjusting the land use by law to accommodate the mobile vending piece. So that's in play. We also have urban design tags in your budget. So we're putting a lot of discussion regarding billboard signage. Now I'm thinking we're looking at signage policy. You guys are tasking administration with a, from what I'm hearing, a really large conversation item that. Is not being pressed really hard from my perspective, or maybe from your perspective. I'm just. Can we just take a pieces of that and move forward within your ten months on your term? Or are you looking for a full detail? Review or can we just go into the urban design discussion and start scoping out that project, which will include your signage components?
Yeah, thank you. I I do see it, you know, there is a little bit of concern out there. Obviously, the difference with how Darkwoods. Perceived how they could put a sign out and and then Coffee Cottage has a sign out on the Legion and. Which I think is good. I think it attracts business to that, you know, to that quaint little store. But there seems to be a little bit of, it's different for each business. And I think we need to maybe review that policy in a sense to make sure that we're treating each business the same, I guess. And what that. And I don't know what what that means. We just need to review the policy and make sure that our bylaw, that that everybody is on the same page or. What that means, because I know we do have a frustrated business because they didn't feel they were treated the same as what other businesses were downtown when they had their opening.
And I guess your worship through to to CEO Becker, I personally, I haven't had any feedback. That was first I've heard of it. So, I mean, it seemed to be like an eleven month. Old issue, right? So I don't know whether the town has had a lot of discussions with that business around around this issue and. Whether it's gone back and forth or whatever. So I I'm not bringing this up because of anything I've heard out there. It's more so what I saw. On thirteen ways the other night and I'm kind of going, oh, never heard of that before, but.
I guess generally there hasn't been a whole lot of conversation and we've essentially sort of left sandwich board signs alone this summer is that. You know, we don't really have a clear direction. We don't want to start stirring things up that. We aren't willing to sort of follow through to the letter of the policy, so we'd sort of just let it lie.
So having sat through the whole sign process that took us. About a year to do because we, what we did was redid the land by law and took the signs out of there and created its own. Process, right? I can tell you that as I drive around and look at signs, I go, hmm, we're not enforcing that one, you know. I know it pretty well and I go, we're really not enforcing a lot of it that we, you know, very closely, so. I think in the specifically for Darkwoods. I think maybe they should have come and said, what can we do before they did it instead of complaining afterwards that they weren't allowed if they'd come in and because there was a. We specifically addressed grand openings and those type of things in the bylaw saying, yeah, you can do this. You could put these types of signs out for this period of time for your grand opening or whatever, so. Just, it's a lot, it was a lot of work and it'd be a lot of work to change it.
It is your turn on the mic to Counselor Reaper.
Oh, my turn already. I also listened to the rural crime webinar. I thought it was quite interesting to. I wasn't sure how much it was going to apply to us, but it was it was quite interesting. It was quite relevant. And then the thirteen ways Zoom meeting and tomorrow I have community services with our new director, so we'll see how that goes.
Thank you, your worship. I also. Sat in on the rural crime prevention webinar. The public engagement on the development plan thirteen ways and. Both were great presentations and I'd just like to throw out a kudo to the community as as you drive around in in the evening here, the. The lights are just beautiful, like maybe I just noticed some more this year, but there seems to be a lot more lights out than what. Has been in the last couple of years. So I I just, I think that needs to, the residents are are showing their Christmas spirit and. In these trying times. So, thank you.
Okay, I think I don't think I have too much to offer. That you guys haven't ever haven't been involved in the thirteen ways and stuff, but. But you're right, Counselor Harrison, I actually last night I went through three towns. Other than Innisfail and there's nothing that comes close to what we've got going. So my chest was sticking out when. When we came through the last one. But anyways, that's, yeah, it's the staff have just gotten behind it a hundred percent. Encouraging. I don't think there was anything else. Upcoming events, I guess we can touch on, but. The Water Commission, I guess I did tell you that we had a. A line break, I went down and had a look at it and. They've got it to the point where it's ready to fasten up on each end, about three hundred yards of line that's split open. It's three foot pipe. But it's about a half million dollar touch to repair it, so. Anyways, it should be back in operation, I'm thinking by the end of this week. Fortunately, it was the second line, so you know, there's, we have a redundancy to the south. And in that regard with the second line and of course, we're on our own line to Innisfail here. And I and I've actually brought it up with them that I think maybe it's time that we. Perhaps revisited the supply line to Innisfail. And, you know, it's, it was built and. Can't recall, it was, I think, eighty two or something. So anyways, it's, no, it was it was older than that, but anyways. I think we should review it because we're, that's our only source. Other than maybe Dodge Lakes.
Okay. Your worship, before you go into upcoming events, there is somebody virtual that would like to be. Participate in the open mic conversation.
Okay, is sir? We're open to to the internet or. The airwaves here, if anybody has any comments they'd like to make. Kathy? You have to unmute. There we are. Can you hear us, Kathy? Kathy? Oh, there, can you hear us now? Right there, yeah.
Kathy, this is CEO Todd Becker. What we heard from manager of fire protective services that. Innisfail and surrounding area, it's pretty loose, Redger County South. Bowden, Spruceview, so. I'm not sure exactly, but fifty one is what we heard today.
Well, Kathy, I'm sorry, I'm hoping you can maybe hear us, but. Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not quite sure what we have a. Can you put it, do a chat on it? Oh, here we are. Yeah, I think they said five in the hospital. Okay. Upcoming events. If that's. It for the agenda, I guess we've got some in camera business to take care of. Would someone like to move we go in camera?
Your worship, I would move that we move in camera.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hill. All in favor? Carrie, I'll take a couple minutes break.